Like to welcome you to an addition of Meet Your School Board Candidates. Every few days, we're gonna be interviewing another member running for school board. And today, I'm very happy to be joined by Davis Powell. Davis, thank you.
Dave, thanks for inviting me. I appreciate it.
We started doing this with the town council candidates, and so far, it's gotten a very good reception. So, we asked the school board candidates if they also would like to do it, and all four wanted to, which is great, because you wanna, want kinda be an equal playing field.
Absolutely.
And what we do here is, we stay away from politics. It's a politic-free zone. We're here to meet the people. We're here to get to know individuals such as Davis, from the time he grew up to where he is right now. And there'll be other shows and other forums for learning the political views. But we're, today, we're looking to have a little fun and get to know each other, and for you to get to know the candidate. Okay, Davis, I guess we'll go right out of the chute with, where did you grow up?
I grew up in Brandon, Florida, which is a suburb town of Tampa. And my, uh, home, my childhood home is still the home where my mother lives to this day. They got married in nineteen sixty-two, and she's still in that house.
Oh, wow.
Um, Brandon back then was nothing like it is today. Um, it was truly a small town. It reminds me a lot of what Merrimack is now. Everybody knows everybody, and, and you better be careful when you go out on the street as a kid, because it'll get back to mom and dad sooner or later.
Yeah. Uh, how long did you live in Brandon for?
I was, um, I was in Brandon until, until we moved up here. After I married my wife, we actually bought a home in Brandon.
Oh, really?
Yeah. And, uh, and we got married in nineteen ninety-two, and we bought a house there. And then I had a chance for, an opportunity with the company that I was working for then, to move up to the northeast. And my wife is from Massachusetts, so it was a natural fit. And we moved up to Massachusetts in nineteen ninety-five. So, I was there from when I was born until nineteen ninety-five.
Oh, great. Now, as far as growing up in Florida, we ask about the summers, but you kinda had one big summer out there.
It was. Um, although, in seventh grade, I remember this, um, when I was in seventh grade, nineteen-something, I don't wanna age myself, um, we actually had snow in Tampa. It was January, and my father comes running inside, and he says, "I've got a three-inch drift in the back of my truck." Um, it wa- it was a coating of snow, still got pictures of it, and everybody thought it was great. But, uh, the funniest thing was, is that if you've ever been to Tampa, there's a river that runs right through the middle of downtown.
Yeah.
That means there's bridges. That means there's ice on the bridges. And nobody knew how to drive on the bridges. And it was just one big skating rink that whole day.
And was that your memory? Was that your first real contact with snow?
That was my first real snow, yeah.
And that was the seventh grade?
Yeah, absolutely.
Now, what'd you do in the summers out there, and during your free time? To stay out of trouble, or get into trouble, as the case may be?
Well, I was fortunate that my, uh, my father, from a young age, um, got me into fishing. He was an avid fisherman when he was growing up in Tampa. We actually both went to the same high school, and he used to take the priests out fishing. I guess that was his way of extra credit.
Yeah.
Um, because he graduated-
When he was in high school?
When he was in high school.
Oh, really?
No, when he was in high school. Um, he actually graduated twenty-first in his class at the high school. The twenty-second child failed. Um, so he liked to say that he was twenty-first in his class. And it was funny, because when I got to the high school later on, this, his same English teacher was there, still teaching, and Father Hart had actually baptized my daughter Melanie. So, it, it was a nice come-around of, of everything. So, his fishing, um, you know, got onto, I, I caught the bug, if you will. We did, um, a lot of, uh, tarpon fishing, saltwater trout fishing. It was all saltwater, man.
And this is up when you were a kid?
When I was a kid, exactly.
So, you were the, you were the Indian opie of, of the ocean?
Uh, yes, I think so. We were. You know, instead of walking down the path whistling, we were in the boat whistling. Um, but it was, it was quite a lot of fun. I got to do a lot of things and go a lot of places because of that, that I would've not had the opportunity to, to do otherwise.
Uh, do you still fish much today, Davis?
I don't. Um, I miss it. It, it's totally different up here. You know, not only saltwater versus freshwater, but, um, you know, even the, the limited freshwater fishing that I did down in Florida is completely different than up here.
Well, plus, the other thing is the old raising the family and earning a living thing.
Exactly.
Sometimes gets in there.
Exactly.
Uh, speaking of your father, I was wondering if you could tell us a little bit about the values, both him and your mother instilled in you that helped make you the person you are today?
My parents owned a plumbing business in Tampa. Uh, my dad actually took it over from his stepfather. And it was the oldest plumbing business in Tampa, um, up until the day that he closed the doors. He found a, a niche, um, in, there were a lot of older homes in Tampa, that nobody knew how to work on the old plumbing there, and he did. So, he found himself a nice little niche, and he was happy doing that. He didn't have to go and build homes every single day. He, he was good. And his work ethic is, is what I, um, most admire about him. He gave a hundred and ten percent in anything that he did, whether he was working or playing. It was all out.
Yeah.
Um, especially, uh, he was able to, to, to turn that pa- the, the fishing passion into a charter business at one point.
Oh, really?
So, he really loved doing that.
Now, did he do that while he still owned the plumbing, or in early in his retirement?
No, he did it. He, unfortunately, he passed away before he was able to really retire. But, no, he absolutely, the, the plumbing got in the way of his fishing, is what it came down to. He, he got himself licensed as a, uh, marine captain. He was able to pilot any vessel up to, um, not, not quite as big as the cargo carriers that you see out there, but any decent-sized fishing, fishing vessel, he was able to do. And, um, and I admired him, because he was able to, to get himself hired on to do charters in the Bahamas and Mexico, take the boats over there.
Oh, so he took the ball and ran with it?
Oh, he absolutely did. He absolutely did.
Now, how about your mother? Wh- wh- where was she as far as a guiding light?
She, um, she was right there with him. Um, my mother, funny story, my mother can't swim. And yet, she's out on the boat all the time. And I admire her for conquering her fear. And she realized that, okay, I can't swim, this guy likes to fish, it's near the water. I guess I better learn to like it if I wanna be around him, meaning my father. And, um, she turned in quite the little fisherwoman. She has, um, a couple of world records and many trophies.
Did you say world records?
World records.
Oh, could you elaborate a bit on that?
Um, Spanish mackerel. It's a, um, it's in the, it's in the kingfish family. Um, again, it's a saltwater, warm, warm-water fish. She has two or three records for light tackle catching, um, anywhere between fifteen and twenty-pound mackerel, which doesn't sound very big, but when it's on a fly rod and you're using two- and five-pound test, that's quite a bit. And they're registered. She has the certificates at her house. The records have since been broken, but, um-
Oh, yeah, that, that don't mean nothing.
But, for a time there, she had-
She had the record.
She held the world record. And she even, I, I just remembered this. There was a contest that Berkeley Line had, and because she got a world record, using their line, they gave her a thousand-dollar check. And it was in the magazines and everything, and-
Well, you were almost holding back on me. You had your father the fisherman, and you the fisherman.
Yeah.
And didn't know we had the world record holder with us.
Not me. You know, I got my share of trophies in the tournaments, but not any world records, that's for sure.
Well, that's geez, so that's, well, that's great. So, you grew up in Florida, and you made, you made good use of, uh, your surroundings.
I did. I did.
Now, let's go into the schoolroom. What were your favorite subjects, and how would you describe yourself as a student?
Oh, as a student, I did, I, I, I did what I needed to get by. I don't wanna say I was a stellar student, um, but because I went to a Catholic high school, a college prep school, there was a lot that was, that was expected. So, I was, you know, we were all held to higher standards. Um, could I have done better? Yeah, I absolutely could've done better. But, um, you know, I thank my parents for giving me that opportunity. It really instilled a lot and, and made me what I am today.
Oh, great.
Oh, you asked about my favorite subject. Um, history, I think, is my favorite, is my favorite subject.
And how about math, did you?
No.
No, shit. I, I fall into the same line there.
No.
I like it nice and concrete. It starts getting abstract on me. It's a little rough.
No, if there's a computer program that can do it for me, I'm all for it.
Activities in high school? Were you in the sports, band, uh?
I wasn't, um, I, I wasn't athletically gifted as far as being able to be in sports. And I couldn't carry a tune in a bucket if I had to, so I didn't get in the band. But there were a lot of other opportunities available. Um, I was on the yearbook staff. We had a, um, uh, we had a pep club, if you will. Uh, we called it the Blue Tide, 'cause our school colors were blue and white. And, um, at that time, Alabama was big, so we took the tide-
Like the Clemson Tide, yeah.
And we went with it. We called it the Blue Tide. And the funny thing is, is that we had two co-presidents, and then everyone else in the club was a vice president of something, because we wanted that for our college applications. So, we could say, we were the vice president of this club.
Well, whoever came up with that was a genius.
It worked out fantastic.
Oh, and then, this is, this, I consider this the tough question that I ask, 'cause it covers such a broad scope. But, your fondest memories growing up, if you look back to when you're by yourself sometime, or looking at your kids, and you think of the past, what really brings a smile to you?
Um, the times that I had with my friends growing up. Um, some of those frie- many of those friends I still have today. My, my next-door neighbors growing up. Um, we still keep in contact. They still checking on my mom to make sure she's doing fine, and that, and that means a lot. Now, my kids have gotten to know their kids, and it, it just, again, that circle of life seems to, to keep going with itself. But the, but the times I was able to spend with friends growing up is-
And, and I'll tell ya, um, you know, speaking of that and staying in touch, you know, Facebook for, whenever something's successful, people like to give it a bad rap. But I personally love it.
I do, too.
Because I'm, I'm in contact with kids I haven't seen in thirty years, and it's like you don't miss a beat, though.
Absolutely.
The ones you grow up with, you just don't miss a beat.
I've got a pretty big high school reunion coming up this year, and, and it's all been generated by Facebook. Seems to be a lot of people going there. And I reconnected with a friend of mine from high school that we hadn't talked since graduation day, for, for the most part. And, um, just the other day, I picked up the phone. He was on the phone, and it was as if we had never stopped, being in contact with each other.
Yeah.
It was just, it was really neat.
That is just a, a funny dynamic, and, and it's not the same as if you worked with someone in your thirties, and you saw them again. You might, you might say two cents with them going into a restaurant. Hey, how you doing?
Absolutely.
But, boy, people you grew up with. So, anyways, we got you through high school.
I'm out of high school.
And where you off to now?
Uh, off to Florida State University. Go Seminoles.
Oh, really?
Yeah, went to, to Tallahassee for college, and, um, liked it a little too much. Coming, coming from twelve years of all-male Catholic school and going into a coed university was quite a shock to the system.
And how many, how many, uh, kids were there when you were there?
At Florida State?
Yeah, I mean, trying to give people a feel for-
At that point, um, I wanna say there was probably twenty-five or twenty-seven thousand kids at that point.
What a number.
Oh, I know. I know. I graduated with a class of a hundred and fifty-some odd, and my very first college class was a biology lecture class that had eleven-hundred kids in it.
Really?
Yeah. It was, I, I thought I was in another, um, um, orientation class or something. I thought I'd walked in the wrong room. It was, it was unbelievable.
I was gonna say, 'cause I know all schools are big, but some of those Florida universities are just unbelievable. I think, I think Florida even has more people. I mean, it's just unbelievable.
It's, it, the, the three, the four, well, no, the three big public schools, U A, University of South Florida, University of Florida, and Florida State are all well over thirty thousand now. And it's, it's unbelievable, and they're very competitive, too. It used to be, especially at USF, we called it drive-through U, um, because there were a lot of commuter students-
Yeah.
-that went there. And all you had to do was sign your name, and you were in. Not anymore.
Well, and they've certainly made their mark in the sports world. They didn't exist when I was growing up, and now they're out there.
They had a decent basketball team when I was growing up.
Yeah.
Nobody thought football, and it's, it's amazing.
Yeah, in fact, first time I ever saw them playing, I saw USF. I thought it was University of San Francisco.
Exactly. Exactly.
Didn't realize they'd made the Big Tie.
Exactly.
So, um, so you're in there, you made doing it fun. What are you minoring in?
Um, let's see, it started off being pre-law, then it went to business, and then it went to mass communications. It, it, it was one of those times where you try and find yourself.
Yeah.
Um, but it was, it was a neat experience. Um, again, still have friends from, from those years. And, um, I, you know, I wouldn't trade the memories for the world.
Great. Now, your wife, how did you meet her?
Well, nineteen, I can't remember what year it was. I decided that I wanted to live in Atlanta, Georgia.
Really? So, that was, it was just a destination?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. My best friend had moved to Atlanta. Um, he was working for Bosch Power Tools, going around setting up displays for all their contractor shows. And, um, and I decided I wanted to live in Atlanta. So, I sold all my stuff. I was living in an apartment, so I didn't have to worry about that. Packed up my car, moved to Atlanta, and-
Now, can you give me an age frame on this?
Twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five.
Okay, so you're in your early twenties, give or take.
Yeah, I'd say twenty, I'd say twenty-five, twenty-six.
Okay.
Um, so packed up everything to move to Atlanta. Lived on his couch, you know, and having the fun. Buckhead was quite the place to be at that point. We did the Buckhead Crawl every weekend. And, uh, you know, I'd go out on job interviews and got my first job offer, and it was for a company in Columbus, Georgia. And I said, "No, I, I moved to Atlanta. I don't wanna live in Columbus."
Yeah.
So, um, got another job offer, and it was for a position in Columbus, Georgia. I said, "Well, no, I, I don't wanna be in Columbus." Well, by then, the money was starting to run out, and I was getting pretty desperate.
Yeah.
And a guy that I used to work with was now head of the insurance department for AAA Auto Club that had just taken over the Georgia Auto Club. And he says, "I can get you in, you know, you'll be selling insurance in our Columbus, Georgia office."
Boy, that Columbus, you're gonna go away.
So, there I go. Went to Columbus, Georgia.
Where was Columbus from, uh, Atlanta, just so I-
Um, about an hour and a half west. It was right on the Alabama, I mean, literally on the Alabama border.
So, did you have to move, or you-
Oh, yeah, I had to move. Had to move, had to, you know, okay, your couch has been nice, but, yeah. Excuse me, had to pull up and move to Columbus where I didn't know a single soul. So, I'm in selling insurance at AAA, and all of a sudden, one day, I hear the door open, and this laugh, this, this infectious laugh came through the door. And I turned and I looked, and it was one of the sales representatives that worked downstairs. They, the, the membership sales all were downstairs in the basement, and, um, and we were upstairs in the service area. And, um, it was my wife Karen, who, um, I, I, I don't know, something about her that moment, it just, I, I need to meet this person.
Yeah.
And so, it was a workplace romance. And we, you know, got to know each other on a friend basis, and then it morphed into that. And then I decided, I can't take Columbus, Georgia anymore.
Yeah, you, you didn't seem like you were happy from the beginning on that.
No, no. Um, I like to say Columbus is the armpit of the South, and it truly is. And, uh, she was from, or she is from Springfield, Massachusetts. And, um, she was going through some, uh, personal issues and decided that, you know, I've gotta move back to Massachusetts. And I said, "Okay, well, you know, I'm not having fun here. I'm moving back to Florida. And, you know, we'll keep in contact, whatever." Well, we dated long distance for probably a year and a half, and finally ended up getting engaged and getting married.
Okay, the next question is, how did you know when she was the one? When, when did it go from being long distance to, I, I can't take this. We need to be together?
Well, it kinda always was that way, but we were wanting to wait until we were both in the same town before we made any sort of formal commit, you know, permanent commitment.
Right.
And I was looking for jobs up north, and they just weren't, you know, they weren't happening.
Yeah.
And, um, so eventually, she said, "Oh, I guess if you can promise me alligators and snakes aren't gonna come and take me away in the middle of the night, I guess I'll move to Florida."
Oh, okay.
So, she-
So, she never made it up there, then?
No, she did. She was living in Massachusetts at that point.
Oh, at that point, okay.
Yeah. And, uh, so she moved down, we got married, and then ended up back up here, and, as I said, in ninety-five.
Okay, well, on the way in here today, I was, uh, there was a great picture of you and your kids.
Oh.
And, uh, there was probably a few years ago.
Great picture of my kids.
Yeah. So, I wondered if you could talk a little bit about that?
I've got three. Um, Sean is our oldest. He is twenty, oh, he's gonna kill me. He's twenty, he's gonna be twenty-six in May. Melanie is our middle, and she just graduated from the high school last year. She's eighteen now, gonna be nineteen. And Danny is our youngest. Oh, I'm sorry, Dan is our youngest. Um, and he's a junior at the high school. He's seventeen.
Okay, now, everyone has their own way of raising kids, and there's a million ways to do it. But if somebody was to come up to you and just say, uh, a newer parent, see, Davis, if you could give me one bit of advice that, that I would appreciate, what would it be?
Savor the moments, because the time goes by way too fast. It, it, it seems like in the blink of an eye, they're grown and they're off to college. And I look, like Karen and I look back, and I just don't know where all the time went.
Yeah. I, I'll tell you one thing I, I kinda envy, uh, this genera- there's a lot of things about this generation, this younger twenty-something generation that I don't envy at all. But, uh, their, their kids' whole life is gonna be there forever.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
On this, on the DVDs, and-
The digital ages.
I mean, everyone, a kid does something funny, you pull out your phone, and off you go. The old days, once a year, you pulled out the, uh, you know, eight-millimeter, or whatever they called it.
Absolutely.
It'll always be there from here on in. Every, there'll be no secrets on-
Oh, no.
On, 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 uh, what, what it was like. And you'll always be able to see yourself looking twenty years old and buff.
Absolutely. My, uh, my daughter, uh, was down in Florida with my mother this past week on spring break. And it was as if she was never gone, because we were either, um, on the computer with each other, or pick up the cellphone, "Hey, what's going on?" Or she'd call me, "Guess where I'm at?" And, you know, it was instantaneous.
Oh, yeah.
You know?
And again, I haven't decided if that's good or bad yet.
I know.
I, I, it's, you can never get away on vacation. And the other thing is, the business people, there's no such thing as vacation. I mean, I'm in the businesses, you know, driving people on their trips, and-
Yeah.
And it's just with between the iPad now, and the, 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 uh, you know, the laptop and the phone. You're, you're fifty-two weeks a year. You're on the phone anywhere in the world.
Absolutely, and it's kinda scary.
That's what I'm saying. So, there's parts of it I envy, and there's other parts that I don't envy at all.
Absolutely.
Okay, well, we touched base on what brought you to Merrimack, but now I'd like to ask you how you've been involved in the community over the years?
When we first moved here, the kids were young. They weren't even in school yet. When Melanie started going to first grade at, um, MES, Master Cola, I, um, got myself involved with the parent-teacher group there. We did, uh, some fundraising. My big fundraiser is when she got to the, it wasn't the upper elementary that, you know, it was the upper elementary at that point, I'm sorry. My big fundraiser, I was known as the donut guy. Because, uh, the first year in, we had a Krispy Kreme fundraiser. Very few people at that point had heard of Krispy Kreme up here, because there wasn't one this far north. The closest one was down in Medford. And I contacted them, made arrangements, and I called them, and I said, "Hey, you know, I wanna come down. I wanna get some donuts, and we wanna sell them. What can you do?" 'Cause we had done that as fundraisers growing up in Florida.
Yeah.
It was a great deal. We got, you know, sell a box for six bucks, and keep the three bucks, and it was an easy, easy way to make money.
Now, what year were we at?
Uh, let's see, I would say, that's probably two thousand two, two thousand three.
'Cause I mean, at the time, they really didn't exist in this area. So, I mean, they were, people were very curious about that.
Absolutely. Well, word got around, and when I called in the order to Krispy Kreme, they said, "Well, you know, we might be able to deliver these for you for a cost. How many, you know, how many are you looking?" I said, "Oh, I've got about four hundred and fifty dozen that, that we've sold." And the guy says, "Why?" And the next thing I know, next day, here's a Krispy Kreme truck driving it up to the upper elementary and unloading it for us. We didn't have to do a thing.
Oh, wow.
And it was a huge, um, success.
Oh, yeah, I remember that at the time. Everyone, because again, we didn't know what they were. We thought they were some type of special treat, you know?
Yeah, manna from heaven.
Yeah, right, right.
So, got involved with the, with the parent groups as, as time went on. And then, um, in two thousand, um, so I jumped ahead a little bit, but in two thousand, I was elected to the school board and served for one term, two thousand to two thousand and three.
Yeah.
Um, and my children, let's see, Sean was in the high school, Melanie and Danny were still in the elementary schools at that point.
Yeah.
Um, so I served on the board at that point, and, um, really enjoyed my, my time and my, my tenure doing it. It, um, it was a time when the economy was doing quite well, so the budget, um, you know, the budget was the budget, but it certainly wasn't as, um, all-inspiring as it is now, shall we say. And I was just kinda leaving it at that.
Yeah.
Um, but there was a lot of good that, that happened at that point, and I enjoyed being involved in that. The, I was also, um, helping coach Danny's, um, teams in the MYA, soccer, baseball, um, that sort of thing.
Yeah, that, that's almost like a given, you know? What I mean by that is, we, I, and I grew up in other places where you, you, there were never, parents were never involved in the MYA, I mean, the youth association like here. Here, it's like, it's, you got, you got kids. You, you coached. I don't care what you know about it. You spend time.
Absolutely. I can remember Danny and, uh, Melanie and Danny, because they're eighteen months apart, they happened to end up on the same T-ball team. And Melanie hated it, um, Danny loved it, and it wa- it was hilarious. But I can remember all the parents, I mean, we had a parent at each, um, position. Because, you know, the kids, they don't know what they're doing, really. They're like, "Ooh, the ball, let's all run for it." But it wa- it was a lot of fun. That's how I got to, to meet a lot of, um, of the parents and, and, you know, that's how we, we met a lot of our friends now.
Yeah.
Was through the MYA and being on the different sports teams and everything.
Oh, yeah. Well, young, from what I can tell, is a lot of the young parents, that's, they meet their own friends that way, you know? Getting to know the parents of their kids.
Yeah, absolutely. That's what we did, through, through either the parent groups at the school or the MYA. You know, that's how we met, uh, most of the people that we know here in town and in the area.
Uh, we talked a little bit about your, uh, fishing growing up. What type of hobbies, uh, are you in now that keep you out of trouble?
Now? Keep me out of trouble? Uh-oh. Um, well, we have a boat. We don't get up to the lake as much as we'd like to.
And what lake would that be?
Winnipeg. And we wanted to, we bought the boat, oh, probably six, seven years ago. Myself, I grew up on the water in Florida. My wife grew up on the lakes in, in New York, at Lake George. We wanted to be able to give our kids the same experience that, that we had.
Yeah.
Um, but unfortunately, it just, time never seems to be enough, and we don't get out on the water as much as we'd like to. We enjoy doing that. We, um, we camped quite a bit. We had two or three other families that all of our kids were the same age, and we'd go camping quite a bit, um, whether it be just down to Potockaway, or we took a trip to Lake George. We went down to, to, um, Amish country in Pennsylvania at one point, and that was a blast. And the kids still talk about that to this day.
I'll tell ya, I went on that trip when I was like fourteen years old, and I always tell my wife I wanna go back. It's just, it's interesting to really be able to see the past while you're living the, living the present.
We all came back and were ready to become Amish, because the way of life was so simple. So simple. Um, so we, we like to do a lot of that, and then, um, I just recently got involved with an organization I'm really proud of. It's called Honor Flight New England, where we will take World War II veterans, well, any veteran, but mainly World War II veterans right now, and flying down to Washington, DC to take a tour of their memorial, plus all the other memorials in town, free of charge.
Oh, wow, I've never heard of such a thing.
It's a national organization, but, um, the, the one in New England just started up three years ago. And, um, so far, they've had twelve flights. They do it just from April to October, because obviously, wintertime would be too harsh for the vets, um, down in, in DC at that point. And that's definitely, you know, something I have a passion for. I, I myself didn't serve in the ser- didn't, um, wasn't able to serve in the service. My father did. He was in the Korean conflict. And, uh, he taught me, you know, to respect our military and to thank him, and this is my way of giving back to them.
Wow, that's neat. Now, my question is, if someone at home right now is watching this, who has a friend, relative, or themselves served in, and they'd like to learn a little bit more about how they may be able to take advantage of this, or, or help the organization. How, how would they go about learning more?
Well, there's a website, HonorFlightNewEnglandAltogether.net, or just Google Honor Flight, and it will pull up probably the national organization, but then from that site, you can drill down into the local organizations.
Oh, great.
And there's, you know, obviously donations are, are much appreciated, because the, the vets, uh, the veterans', um, airfare and everything is, is taken care of. Guardians, it's a one-to-one ratio. Guardians go with them. The guardians pay their own way.
Very good. And, um, this is our last, uh, question as far as the first segment that we have.
Okay.
And again, I find it, it, it tells a lot about the person or where they are now in their life. How do you spend a typical Saturday?
How do I spend a typical Saturday?
Yeah, typical Saturday, how, how did you spend today in the year two thousand twelve?
Well, it kinda depends on if my wife is working or not. If she's not working, then I have a list of stuff to do. If she is working, then we go off and spend the day together, or as a family. And so, it, it kinda depends on, on which day the, um, you know, whether she's working or not.
Uh, she's not, she's not working.
She's not working, then I've got my, my chores I go around and do. I'll have some, some work from the week that I haven't gotten to that I'll catch up on. I'm trying to get that out of the way early, so that I've got the rest of the day to spend with the family. Or, you know, when she's off work, I'm not doing it at night, um, you know, taking up time there.
Now, now, as being a, a new person to, uh, Merrimack, and again, I stress the word "new person." I, I, I myself came here about the same time you did, but I've always joked that, if you've been here less than twenty years, the moving van's still in the driveway.
I, I think that's being generous. I, I, I don't even think it's twenty years. I, I think it's more like thirty, thirty-five years.
Yeah, and, and, and Kay said it was watching, just, you, you've been here all the same, like, I've been here sixteen, seventeen years. So, I don't want anyone to think, "Watching, oh, he just moved it down." No, but that's the joke. But what I was gonna say is, uh, when you're here, one of the big pastimes you find out is the dump. Even though it ain't even a dump anymore, is-
Oh, my God. That brings back memories.
Yeah.
I, I can still remember the toys that I would find for the kids um, that were set out on the side.
Yeah, right, right.
That, there's nothing wrong with them and brought them over to kids. They had the best time with them. It was, it was um, it was different.
Yeah, well, I, I grew up in Lowell and I never went to the dump. I didn't even know where it was till I left. And here, it's, you, you go there, it's. I, I, I can't explain it unless you've been here, but it's, it's somehow fun or, or it's cultural, it's something.
Well, you know what? I remember Norm Carr saying that it was the place to meet your, your neighbors. Um, people go there to socialize on the weekend on Saturday. And he's, you know, he's absolutely right.
Oh, he was right. He, and he got hit with some heat for that remark and, and he is right. He is right. You, you see your, you, you got twenty bays there and by the time you're done, you have seen somebody you know from the MYA or work or school or. Or your neighbor. He, he's, he was, he was right on that one.
Well, you, you know how they have the activity line now and they used, they used to have it when it was the old dump, the landfill before, they still had an activity line. And I remember going back real quick to the Krispy Kremes. We had, we bought extra because we wanted to, to sell them that weekend. And we called them dump donuts, um, because we were gonna be at the dump selling the donuts. But, but that's the neat thing. You see all kinds of organizations out there, uh, you know, from the Boy Scouts at the Kiwanis.
Oh, absolutely.
Exchange Club peanuts. Uh, I look forward to that every year.
And even political time, I mean, the, the, the candidates, no, it is a great place to, to let people know what's going on. And uh, it's, it's, I've always amazed, it's, you know, it's free and people are well behaved and you're, they're, they're, they get very uh, strict regulations. You stay on this side of the cones and you don't bother the people trying to get rid of it. But, no, I, I, I have found the, when I first heard about the dump, I kinda gave one of these.
Mm-hmm.
And now I say, oh, my, my wife will say, where are you going to dump? We, we don't got anything to throw. Oh, no, I, I got something to throw up.
Remember, we're growing, you know, coming from Florida, moving up here um, from Florida and you took your trash in a can to the curb and they came by Mondays and Thursdays and they picked it up and took it away. And you come up here and say, no, you gotta take care of it. What? What are you talking about? Uh, it, it, it definitely was a whole nother world when we moved up here, that's for sure.
Oh, absolutely. And you have to sometimes put it in when you buy a new vehicle. That, that, that's involved in the equation.
Oh, yeah.
Well, the next part we have is called the lightning round. And I don't know, I know you've been uh, noticing, I've been writing down little notes. I haven't been, I haven't been writing down what you said. What, what happened is, I just was, this is a two-page cheat sheet that I use.
We got off script.
And, well, no, what happened is I went to pull the second uh, page to give me my lightning round questions and uh, it was blank. So I've been here, I've been here trying to remember what they are. So we're gonna, we'll do our best here and then we'll move on. Uh, first car you owned?
Toyota Corolla nineteen seventy-eight, silver, black interior. Doesn't, doesn't look anything like the Corollas now.
Oh, really? Yeah. Yep, current car?
Two thousand eleven Ford Taurus with a big blue square on the side of it. Company car, I have no choice.
Uh, favorite TV show growing up?
Growing up?
Yeah.
Um, I'd have to say probably MASH.
Oh, yeah, I loved that. Hawkeye was my hero.
Oh, yeah.
And the favorite TV show now?
Now? Um, oh, I, I'm trying to think what we watch now. Um, NCIS, that, that's my absolute favorite show. I don't know why I hesitate on that. The real NCIS, not the NCIS Los Angeles.
Right, the one with Mark Conley. Yeah, I like that. In fact, I'm, as we tape this, this, and uh, on Monday, I think Jamie Lee Curtis is gonna be on. Looks like a good show.
Yes, yes.
Uh, favorite book you ever read?
That I ever read?
Yeah.
Hmm, probably anything by Clancy. Um, if I had to pick one, Hunt for Red October, one of his first ones.
Okay, and the last book you read?
Um, actually, the Obamas. Um, I was intrigued by the controversy that came out around it, wanted to see what it was all about. Um, so I went to the library and, and uh, borrowed the book and, and it was a good read. I'm glad that I read it.
Oh, very good. And was it, was it biased, would you say? I mean, you're gonna get biased in any big figure, no matter what. Exactly. Overall, but some are just real biased. Some book you read and you say, this guy has an agenda. And this one, did you feel they were trying to present the facts as that they could?
I thought it was, I, I felt it showed both sides very fairly. Um, obviously, you could tell it was, it was written by, um, I don't wanna call them an insider, but someone who had been around the Obama camp for quite a while. But they also did something that surprised me and showed the conflict within his staff, within the family and the staff and such. And that, that was a unique perspective that I had never seen before.
Uh, first job?
First job? Well, my, my first, my first job is different from my first real job. First job was working for Dad. I had no choice. Uh, you know, he owned a plumbing business, he worked on Saturdays. You're not sitting home by yourself, you're coming in and working with me. So that was working for Dad. My first real job was at Busch Gardens in Tampa.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
What'd you do there?
Um, I did pretty much everything except scoop elephant poop. Um, I uh, started off when I was in high school. Um, at sixteen, you could get a job there.
Now, how far do you live from there?
Uh, probably half an hour at that point because that was before the interstate was in and, and it was, wasn't any quick way to get there.
Yeah.
But Busch Gardens was the place to work when you were in high school. And the neat thing about it is it drew from all high schools. So you made friends with kids from other schools that you would never have run into before.
Right.
And some of my closest friends I still have are from that time period. Some of them still work there as a matter of fact. But um, I, I, uh, my favorite thing was running the rides. You know, here's a sixteen-year-old kid running a roller coaster. How scary is that?
How many years did you work there?
Oh, goodness, I worked there through college and, or through high school and college. Um, so I was there off and on, you know, with breaks and everything, probably just about nine, eight or nine years.
Wow, that's pretty cool.
It was a lot of fun, a lot of fun.
Um, current job?
Current job, I work as a claims adjuster for Nationwide Insurance. Um, I, I'm the one that comes out to the car when it's crashed and write the estimates and give you the check. So you either love me or you hate me, one or the other. There's no in-between.
Yeah, a little different than riding a roller, than a.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, favorite athlete growing up?
Growing up? Um, uh, Bob Greasy, quarterback Miami Dolphins.
And favorite athlete now?
Now? Hmm, I'd have to say, um, he's not current, but um, Kurt Schilling. Um, the, the, the way he pushed himself during the World Series, um, really meant a lot.
Yeah, no, I, he, he's a love you, hate him kinda guy. I like him.
Absolutely, very polarizing.
Yeah. And uh, music as far as back then, did you have any groups or bands growing up?
Um, Journey, The Cars. I was pretty, pretty varied, um, as far as that. It wasn't, you know, punk rock was coming around then. It wasn't, um, you know, I liked some of the stuff, but not, you know, I certainly didn't wanna go to the concerts. Um, but we would go, we'd go see the car. I remember going and seeing the cars. Um, the Eagles and Jimmy Buffett toured together at one time at Tampa Stadium.
Buffett when you were young?
Yeah, um, I've seen him, I've seen him four times, four, five times. Four times I remember, five times, the, the fifth time I don't. Um, and that was with my wife and I don't know why I don't remember that concert, but I just don't remember it.
I would have, might have thought it had been the other way around.
I know, huh? You would think.
And how about now? Do you have any artists uh, now that you, that you like?
I like the contemporary country. Um, Blake Shelton, Miranda Lambert, um, uh, Zac Brown Band. Um, I like what they're doing with the, with the music now. But I've got satellite radio because I'm in the car all day. I hate commercials, so I'm flipping between the channels all the time.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, well, we're coming to the time, we're gonna wrap it up a little. And the first question I have is uh, it used to be called goals, but now the vernacular is the bucket list.
Oh.
If some of the, some of the stuff you'd like to accomplish in the next ten to twenty years?
It's funny you should say that because my daughter and I started a bucket, a bucket list probably about five years ago.
Oh, really?
We'd see stuff on TV and like, wow, that looks really neat. I'd like to go there. I'd like to do that. So we started a list. And so far, we've checked off probably four or five of those things.
Oh, neat.
Um, from seeing a Broadway show to eating at a particular restaurant that we've seen on TV and, and that sort of stuff. Um, my wife's job has given us quite the opportunity to do traveling. She's a, a travel agent. And we've taken full advantage of that. And um, so, so that part of it's already taken care of, the traveling.
Yeah, yeah.
The traveling part of it. Um, but what I, I think what I, the big thing that I would love to do is take my grandkids back to where I grew up. And kind of show them what it was like back then. Um, my parents did that with me, my grandparents. I had the opportunity to, to go back to Ohio and see, see where they grew up. And, and that always, I like that connection in, in uh, bringing things full circle.
Oh, great. Uh, where are you looking to retire?
Florida.
That is, that, that wasn't a tough question, was it?
Um, I would love to live on the beach. Um, it, it's kinda funny because my wife and I both have the same idea. When we retire, we wanna live on the water. My definition of the water is different from her definition, however.
Yeah.
I'm on the ocean, she's on a lake. So we're gonna have to find a lake that's really close to an ocean, um, when it comes time.
Yeah. And if you could uh, kinda look forward twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years? Who knows what technology has in store for us?
I know, huh?
When it's all said and done.
Mm-hmm.
And uh, you've, you've done your thing in this world, how would you like to be remembered?
I have a quote, um, that I came across probably fifteen years ago. That in one hundred years, it will not matter what kinda car I drove, how much money I had in the bank, what type of house I lived in, but that I made the difference in the life of a child. And that's what I would like to be remembered by. Um, I would like people to see my children and say, wow. You know, you guys are doing good. Your parents must have done something right. And I, I would love to leave that as my legacy.
Oh, great. Geez, I don't think you could ask for anything better than that.
We have it hanging up behind the door, the front door at the house. So I see it every day when I go outside.
Every day.
Yeah.
Well, I'll tell you, this has been great, uh, Davis. I've, I've known you, uh, just to give a full disclosure, we met ten years ago when I was holding the campaign sign, running for town council, you were running for school board.
And my daughter was between us, holding the signed vote for my daddy and nobody knew whose daughter she was.
Yeah. Yeah. There you go.
It worked out great.
And uh, well, I'll tell you, I've, I've learned a lot more today than I did standing on the corner. It's been really great and then uh.
Well, Dave, thanks for having me. I, I appreciate it. I enjoyed this too.
And good luck. And again, your name will be on the ballot for the school board on April tenth.
Absolutely.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Davis. Bye-bye.
Bye.